The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, having been transmitted to the Courier News on Tuesday, January 6, 2025, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Council members Briggs Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessoms.
Present.
And Council President Hockaday.
Present.
All members present at a corner.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the law which stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 10th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? All right, the motion has been passed, minutes have been approved. All right, we'll first move to discussion items. We have a presentation regarding our resolution that we have on tonight for Jackie Robinson Day.
Yes, Jackie Robinson Day and also National Community Garden Day. And I'm going to ask the Superintendent of Recreation, Superintendent Taylor, to come up and speak.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you for giving me time on your most busy agenda. Unfortunately, I don't see any of the kids here, and when we planned these activities, it was planned during last year before I knew about the schedule change. So the Jackie Robinson Day was held on April 15th, and you were supposed to receive these shirts prior to our trip because Plainfield went to the Yankees game for, we celebrated Jackie Robinson Day at the Yankees, and the city of Plainfield was there. So I have your shirts, which I of course will give to the clerk to distribute. You all can use them next year, and unfortunately, it's spring break, so none of the kids are here because I had wanted a photo op. So I appreciate your accommodation and consideration for that. But I do have my two community garden coordinators here, Angela Davis and Ashley Neal, and we had planned, we had invited the gardeners to come, but I don't see any of the, oh, the gardeners, come, 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 come. So previously, April 14th is recognized as National Gardening Day, and we have two community gardens in Plainfield, and the third is the tree, Fruit Tree Orchard. Gardeners, please come up. We've been working hard at these sites, and you know, best kept secret, we want, I wanted to introduce to some of the gardeners because we have a very large active group, and we get lots of calls every year about gardening, and they also want to give you a gift about some of the work that we do. Angel, what's in this plant? I'd asked them just to give you guys a peanut plant to take home, put in your garden, but they wanted to do a little bit more. So just tell them briefly what that is.
Okay, briefly, briefly. Hi, I'm Angel.
Hello.
Um, so I have, we have, sorry, okay, we got three plants here. It's a companion planting, it's an ecosystem, as the community of Plainfield is an ecosystem. So we have marigold here, which helps deter pests, rosemary, which is also helping to deter pests and add nitrogen to the soil, and then we have a hyacinth, which is just in place for the peanut plant, and they all go together and work together to support each other, give nutrients, and that's it.
Thanks. They were instructed to give you your plants tonight, but when I saw how large it was, I suggested that we take them to the clerk's office for your pickup tomorrow, and there'll be a little instruction card for how to take care of your plants at home. But the gardeners are here, they got two new sheds this year, and we also got notified this week that we were awarded the Union County Grant, so we'll be installing two handicapped accessible, large planters in both of our, both of our locations. And this year, we'll be installing our Fruit Tree Orchard on Sloan Boulevard. So since they are here, Mayor, would you indulge us with a quick photo op and members of the council? That's why we came so early, if you wouldn't mind, just one quick photo op for us, thank you.
Of course.
In the middle. Would you all mind? Yeah, thank you so much. [applause] And thank you again, we just wanted the community to be aware and know that we do is important. We want to put, create opportunities for Plainfield residents to be in nature so we can rest, so we can breathe, so we can live. So give us a call, we hope to see you soon in one of our gardens, and thank you again for your accommodation. [applause]
All right, thank you once again. All right, we will move to consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. All right, so we have ordinances MC 2025-13 and MC 2025-14, which are scheduled for public hearing and final passage for the regular meeting as advertised. We'll now move on to resolutions. We'll start with legislative body items, R 173-25 through R 175-25. Council, do we have a consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions for the legislative item, body items? Okay, hearing none. We have consensus, what is that?
Before we move on, I just wanted to note, you'll see on first reading, MC 2025-15, it's an ordinance to establish the budget appropriations limit, the bank cap. By law, we have to adopt that ordinance before the introduction of the budget, so when it comes time for the second reading for the ordinances, we're going to add that along with it, so that that's adopted before the adoption of the budget.
Thank you. Okay, so we have consensus to add the legislative body items. We'll next move to the mayor/business administrator items, R 176-25 through 184-25. Please present your items.
Okay, thank you. The first item we have, I'm going to talk about the item, and then we'll take a brief bake to do the swearing in. So we will be requesting advice and consent for the appointment of Sergeant Bethia as our OEM Coordinator for the city of Plainfield, and I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank Director Childress, who has served in that role very capably for the past few years, and also to note that Sergeant Bethia, who's been with us for over 20 years, will be our first female OEM Coordinator in the city of Plainfield, and we are very much looking forward. So we'll just take a second to do the swearing in.
We have to do that after the adoption. We have to do that after it's actually adopted.
Oh, after, okay. Okay, sorry.
All right, we'll come back to the swearing in portion later.
Okay, we have another resolution, another advice and consent resolution, this is for Rich Soto, for the Plainfield Historic Preservation Commission. Then we have two resolutions related to the HIF that we're a part of, they have officially changed their name to NJ Solutions Joint Health Insurance Fund. It was a whole process with the state to do this, so they weren't able to do it by January when we introduced the HIF. So we have to now amend the agreements, the bylaws, and the indemnity and trust agreement, which is 178-25 and 179-25, so that the name change is there, but nothing else about those are changing. Then we have a resolution for support for us to enter into a contract with the Plainfield Community Outreach, Incorp VIP Summer Program, not to exceed $40,000. This, we did this last year as well, this is a six-week enrichment camp, they do, they offer breakfast and lunch, they go to the pool, they do field trips, they do, they learn tech, things like that, for K through eight students who are residents of the city of Plainfield, and we supplement that for $40,000 for 150 kids. So that's what, what that resolution is. The next one is seeking approval to submit a grant application for $18,563. This is one we do annually with the county, and this gives us money to do drug and alcohol education, specifically, we've been focusing on education around vaping. The next one is another resolution with the county, this one is seeking approval to enter into an agreement for $7,000 with the county, this is for our July 4th celebration, and this is to pay for the police and maintenance, so police services and a maintenance attendant. And then we have the two that Superintendent Taylor just went over, the Jackie Robinson Day on April 15th, and the resolution recognizing April 14th as National Gardening Day.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members?
Council President, I have one question.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Cherry.
For R 180-25, is there a cost associated to our constituents to attend this program?
Yes, we're supplementing, but I believe it's about 100 to 150 a week for the families. Thank you.
Further questions?
Council President, R 81-25, can you talk a little bit about the campaign that we do around vaping? How are we getting the message out?
Yes, so we've been going into the schools, the Division of Parks and Recreation has been going into the schools to do that, and they've also been creating literature about what harms vaping can, can cause, because obviously, it's a newer vice, and so teaching kids the impact it can have on your lungs and on your, on your body.
So would this be for the remainder of the school year or for next school year?
It'll be for the remainder and for next. It'll be all the way until next time this year, so we'll get, we'll probably apply for it again, you know, next April.
Further questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting? Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these shall be added. All right, we'll next move to the Department of Finance items. Floor is yours.
Good evening all.
Good evening.
I have four resolutions for your approval, resolutions, R 185-25 through 188-25. R 185-25, resolution authorizing a contract award to PrimePoint Software. This is for, this is for payroll services, time and attendance and tracking of our human resources management system.
Make sure your microphone's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Okay, I'll speak a little louder.
I don't think it's on.
Okay, there are four resolutions for the council's approval. First one is resolution authorizing a contract award to PrimePoint Software, and this is for payroll services, time and attendance and track, tracking, and human resources and management information system, and this is a renewal for one year. The second resolution is resolution authorizing tax refunds on certain properties. These properties are managed by the financial institutions, but the residents mistakenly also paid the taxes, so we have to refund the residents. The third one is a resolution authorizing amendments to our temporary budget. We still operating on temporary budget until our budget is adopted, so we added seven grants, so that's the addition, and then resolution authorizing the introduction of the municipal budget in the amount of 108,873,426 dollars and 14 cents for the current fund, 1,215,000 for the park and utility fund, 9,354,205 dollars for the store utility fund, and 14,854,698 dollars for the solid waste utility fund. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council members?
Yeah, just one.
Go right ahead.
With regard to Resolution 186-25, when that happens, does that happen automatically, or does the homeowner have to kind of petition the tax office for that refund?
They, sometimes they would notice that they've paid it twice, but most times, the tax office will let them know that it's been paid twice.
And then you guys just automatically do?
They just refund it.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
R 185-25, if you would just clarify, because I was reading the background information, it wasn't clear, is this a renewal from a current contract, or is this a new contract award?
This is a renewal from a current contract. We had a three-year prior to this, which expired, but we are renewing for one year.
Thank you.
Sir Council President.
Mayor.
I would just like to add a couple comments as they relate to the introduction of the budget. It should be pointed out that this year, the budget has been introduced with a 0% tax increase, and it's actually better than that, there's a 0.18% reduction in municipal taxes. And this would be the third time in the past five years that we have done that, and so it's important for that to be pointed out. In 2018, the current average increase was 1.49%, no decrease in services, in fact, services have increased, salaries have gone up significantly, health benefit costs have nearly doubled, and we've all been made aware of the burden that health benefit costs has imposed on municipalities and counties all across the state. And so the fact that we've been able to retain, to have taxes remain stable, have taxes being reduced, putting or keeping monies into the pockets of our property owners, I think that that deserves to be made mention of, and this can only be done with someone with significant financial and municipal budgeting experience, and in order for us to do this, in order for us to present you with the budget that we have presented, it required someone with significant financial experience, it requires a department that has the experience in order to assemble a budget that we have presented, that we will present to you here this evening on first reading, and so I just wanted to point out to our residents that this budget reflects a 0% tax increase, it actually reflects a reduction, and this is the third time in five years that we are doing this. So I just wanted to make sure I share that with the governing body and with the listening public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Just a quick question regarding PrimePoint, why one year instead of three? Are we looking to go in another direction, or? Go ahead.
I could speak to that. Their HRIS is a little bit limited, and in the past four, three years that we've been with them, technology has advanced in, with other vendors, so I just didn't want us to be married to them for another three years when I see that technology is much advanced in the HRIS field and other, with other vendors.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting? So moved. Yes. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these shall be added to the voting meeting. The Police Department Director, please present your items.
Good evening, Council President.
Good evening. Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Council President and council members. Police Department has three resolutions for your consideration tonight. First one is R 189-25, resolution for a one-year subscription renewal for Power Document Management Service, which is Power DMS, in an amount for, an amount not to exceed $8,832.96. R 90-25 is a resolution authorizing approval to enter into professional services contract with Lexipol LLC. They've replaced the Rogers Group, and this is in regards to us maintaining our certification as a fully accredited police or law enforcement agency. That will not exceed $13,928.36. And lastly, is a resolution for the department to enter into an agreement with TSLAC Environmental Services for required repairs to the fuel tank product lines and tank top equipment in an amount not to exceed $65,089.0. That is the fuel tank at the police department that's in the ground, it, it has a problem with it, and we have to make these repairs to be compliant with the state of New Jersey's guidelines. That's all I have.
Okay, hearing none. Do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added. The Fire Department, floor is yours.
Okay, the Fire Department has one resolution for your review tonight, which is R 192-25, and it's for the upgrade of a truck that we have to fit a much larger ladder.
Questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any opposition or abstentions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, this should be added to the voting meeting. The Department of Public Works, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Department of Public Works has seven resolutions for your approval. Resolution 193, authorizing approval to Morris County Co-op for the million and pavilion of Berkeley Avenue and Dixie Lane, in an amount not to exceed $324,257.50. Resolution 194, resolution authorizes approval to enter into contract to Morris County Co-op for concrete replacement of 21 ADA ramps at $70,500 with sephelly. General contracting, and Resolution 195 is authorization award for contractor J.A. Alexander, Inc., of two million pav, five intersections with crosswalks, et cetera, is under the safe route for school, in an amount not to exceed 678,574,21, and that's five intersections. Resolution 196 is authorization to award a contract for Portofino Builders for the road resurfaces of West Est, East Front Street, from Plainfield Avenue to Waton Avenue, in an amount not to exceed $1,405,166, and that also includes a signal, traffic light. Resolution 197, resolution authorizes award of professional service contract to only associates that's for to hire a licensed site remediation professional for the Madison Avenue Park and Outfield Fitness Area, under guidance of the NJDEP, under and Outdoor Fitness Area under guidance of the NJDEP, $155,000. Resolution 198, authorization to change order number one to Remington and Vernon for the Russian Recreation Complex, the progress area for construction, renovation, and contract administration services, in an amount not to exceed $61,063. And that concludes my resolution. No questions.
Okay. You did 199-25. Okay, any questions from council?
Council President?
Yes. Council VP?
Uh, thank you.
Go right ahead.
I have one more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And 199, resolution authorizing award of contractor Fisher Contracting, Inc., for installation of speed humps, in a total amount of $244,082.70.
All right, thank you. Go right ahead, Madam VP.
Thank you. Good evening, Director. I have a few questions for you this evening. Regarding R. 196, can you clarify for me the difference in the alternative bid one, two, three, plus base? Could you explain that to me?
Yes, good question. That, that is, that's the traffic lights at each intersection, that was the addition of a traffic light. We wanted number one, because that came out of those lowest responsible bidder, and that was for one light to be at Park and Front Street. So we wanted that. All the other lights would be, you, so I'm taking to Resolution for Portofino UX about that.
Mm-hmm.
We, we did alternate bid number one, okay, that was lowest responsible bidder, based on all the bids that were submitted, the six bids. And the alternate lights were for three different intersections, that lights would go up in that location. So Front Street and Park Avenue would be the first, first alternate number. The second one would have been West Front Street and Central Avenue, and the third would have been Madison and West Front. So that was the alternate bid for the edit, a light with that. So we can only do one light based on funding, so that's why we chose the first one, the ladder of the street, which would be Front and Park.
Okay, so with each bid, you added a different intersection?
Yes.
And that's why it went up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Regarding R. 197, where it says the purchase of professional services, does this include the actual remediation that will happen, or is this just the cost of them to manage this?
It's just to manage the whole, the whole area, it's not the remediation itself.
And we will have to cover the cost of any remediation that happened?
Yeah, we're applying for grant to the NJDEP to cover that for us. We would have to pick up 25 to send it back, we were awarded that. So we anticipate a mountain like 20,000 for remediation work.
And if I may add, Counselor, I've actually directed a team, and it's taken longer than I expected, to find out who owned that property prior to the city taking ownership of that property. Because if it's PSCNG, whoever it was, the same way that right outside here used to be an old coal plant way back when, and it was a major remediation that occurred here at this parking lot, the entire lot was resurfaced, the street was repaid, so I want to find out who owned the park that we currently use as the playground, so that we can go after who that owner was. If it's PSCNG, we will go after PSCNG. But we need to find out, and I hope by tomorrow, I would have an answer from the Assessors Department on who the prior owner was.
That'd be great, Mayor, in order to make sure that they cover the cost and it's not passed on to the taxpayer. Regarding R. 198, we have the engineer wanting additional $61,000. Why? And what was their deadline for this project?
Well, the project was a four-year, 365 years. It far exceeded that, of course, plus supply and demand, trying to get things that we need for it, and this on the weather played a part in that too, you know, rain and snow, that extended everything. Again, also supply and demand, trying to get certain equipment and things that we need to finish the project.
What is their, what is their deadline that they promised the city that they'd have this project done by?
The, the deadline was really trying to do that by sometime on Memorial Day, and that area, around that time.
Okay.
What we're looking at too, right now, based on that, maybe sometime this second, third week in June, to have everything completed.
And then my last question regarding R. 199, this $244,000, how many speed bumps does that buy us?
That gives you approximately 37 speed bumps.
And that's two per street?
Some streets are two, depends on the study. Some are two, some may have eight, some may have four, based on the locations and like that, based on the study.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Any other council colleagues wish to ask questions?
Council President, I have a question.
Please go right ahead.
So for R. 193 and R. 196, Director, is it the goal to have all the lead service and gas lines done prior to this milling, or?
Absolutely, that's our goal. We work when we're done for public service, hammer it more, to make sure they're going to deliver ahead of us, so we can do what we have to do.
Thank you. And then for R. 196-25, thank you first for identifying the funding through NJDOT, because I know that that was one of the things that your administration said that it would not be a cost to the taxpayer. What is the timeframe?
Okay, but this area right here is the city in the park, so that, that portion right there between here, between Mod John and Plainfield.
Okay.
That's city. That's why, that's why you call it a capital, because everything else outside it, all about 28, there's no capital at all.
Okay.
It's all grant funded.
Grant funded, correct. So what's the timeframe to complete that project, start to beginning?
Yeah, beginning and end. Well, right now, we're just waiting for some funding, and we got some, some bid openings coming up, so hopefully, maybe September, October, Weather Committee, and we can get everything done.
Thank you. And one, the last one, for R. 199-25, are you able to provide a list of where the speed bumps are going to be located?
Yes, because we, several neighbors we're looking at too, still, to make sure that we're, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
As Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilman.
Yes, Resolution 199, have we did a study to see if the speed bumps are actually working? Has it been slowing down traffic?
Well, from what I know, it's a council question, but yes, everything we're doing, we're getting just good remarks from everyone, where we place speed humps, that it has slowed down somewhat, so. And that, and also the four-way stops, we've been pretty good in positive feedback, and I would refer to the police on that part, but yes, we're getting positive feedback with the speed humps. There's a demand for so much more, like even this list, I'm getting calls from everyone saying they need them in certain areas. We do monitor to see how best people are going, and it's been quite a difference.
Okay, so we have been tracking the data?
We're tracking everything we can. That itself, we just do the study, for any data, you know, I refer to respond on monitoring, whatever goes on with that.
Okay, and with the four-way stops, since you just brought that up as well, is there a time where we're going to say, you know, are we going to educate the public on how to utilize the four-way stops?
We've, we've been doing that from the beginning. There have been flyers that we've sent out, there's been several communications that we have sent out regarding the public on how, if four vehicles arrive at a, at a four-way stop sign, who goes first? So we'll continue to do that because it's an ongoing process. A lot of times, people, they're in a rush, they just want to go up there and run through, run through as quickly as possible, but we have been educating the public. We're doing it as best we can.
And we do know a bad act is a bad actor, right?
Absolutely.
Which we try to do to make things better, some folks, doesn't matter what they do, they want to follow the laws or the rules for some reason.
Okay, so you said you've been sending out?
That's where enforcement comes.
Flyers? You said flyers you send out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did we ever think about, since we do have the social media, putting videos up on the city website, some of the community forums and town halls that we have as well?
Yes, it's funny that you actually said that. My, my Traffic Division actually completed some videos just recently in regards to this, in regards to all the new layouts and things that we have been doing. We have used social media to put up that flyer that I was talking about, instead of just handing out paper flyers. We have put that out on social media, we'll blast it out again, but we have just completed a video on various things that we have changed in terms of traffic in the city and how people can comply with it.
Okay, and the last question, have, have you seen an impact on the emergency services as far as the police, fire?
You mean in like slowdowns or something like that? Really, no. I, I can only speak to the Fire Department, obviously Director Childress is here, he can speak in regards to the, the Fire Department, but I haven't seen any, any instances where it has caused a problem where we're responding to an emergency.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
I could just add to that, that our EMS services are, are beating numbers that we've never seen in Plainfield, so it's not slowing down EMS services.
Okay, go right ahead.
With regard to Item 197-25, the outdoor fitness area, is, will there be a point where the community would have input as to what type of equipment or what they would like to see there with regard to the exercise equipment?
Well, we did mostly, we got just about every piece of equipment you can think of is going to be there.
Okay.
So it'd be pretty much everything, something for everyone. It is all-inclusive equipment, so it's for everyone, if you have a handicap, et cetera, but it's for everyone from 13 and up, so that's what we'll be there in that location.
Okay.
It's every piece of equipment you can think about, pretty much, we looked at.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added to the voting meeting. We'll now move to the Department of Economic Development.
Good evening, Council. I will be presenting items R. 200 to 204. The first resolution refers to a refund for a construction permit fees. These fees are no longer necessary because the work was not performed. For Items 201 to 202, they're in reference to the Center of Excellence, Plainfield Recreation Cultural Center of Excellence. There was a request at the last council meeting that we do a presentation that's associated with this, so we're just going to take a moment to bring it up. So just to remind everyone, going back to the first slide, the first slide is looking at the historic building, which is the YMCA building across from City Hall. This building will be preserved. We have applied for, we've received actually, a New Jersey Historic Trust Grant from the state to develop a preservation plan. We are also looking to do the construction with historic's tax credits. So what that means is we're going to preserve the outside of the building, and this will be an adaptive reuse for the 55,000 square foot building. The building that's behind it, right here, you're going to see the two tones, the two tones, this is for the 100% affordable units that will be behind the building. It will start the mid-block where you're looking, this, the street that we're facing right now is Watchon, it goes back to Cleveland in between East Sixth Street and East Fifth Looking at the side view, this is looking at the intersection of Watchon as well as East Sixth Street. The residential area starts mid-block, what are we doing?
There we go.
The residential area starts mid-block, the affordable units, it has some parking that goes underneath the building, if you see the opening that's in the center, it's 75 parking spaces that are under there. If you look at what's in the interior of the building, so again, this is going to be a recreation and cultural center, so we will have live performance spaces, we will have a yoga studio, a dance studio, as well as a recording studio. What you're seeing in front of you, starting with the upper left-hand corner, that is going to be a cafe. You're seeing the basketball court, which will also double as a performance space, and you're seeing a competition pool. The competition pool will go as deep as 10 feet. This will be with a cellar, you're looking at four stories, four layers of a building that's being there, but we will stay in the existing footprint. Then looking at the residential building, this is looking from the Cleveland Avenue point of view. This is the 100% affordable units, you're seeing a courtyard space that's going to have sculptures, you're seeing on the sides where we're going to have a mural. Then in the red brick building, that's where we have the 6,000 square feet of the gallery space that's going to be available. Now specifically referring to Item 201, this is referring to the designation of a developer for the City Hall parking deck. This is looking at a plan view or over top where you're able to see that City Hall building will not be touched, it will be subdivided, and it will also offer for additional landscaping, where we'll have a heritage walk, we will also have a micro forest that will collect particulate matter for, to remove the pollutants from in the air. You're going to see solar panels on top of the building. What the building will look like behind City Hall, it's meant to look like a forest behind City Hall. It will be a live wall, it will be green, we will have solar louvers on the side, as well as solar panels on the top. We will also have a battery storage backup, as well as a full generator, which we have now, the full generator will be slightly larger to support both the parking deck as well as City Hall. If you look at the louvers from the side, the louvers are actually solar panels themselves as well. And what we have in Item Number 202, this resolution refers to the submission to EDA as well as the Housing and Mortgage Financing Agency. This is to certify that we will have affordable units within the residential that we've shown. Then moving to Item 203 and 204, these are inspection items. The first item is looking to place a lien on 20 properties, and this is for debris cleanup. The next item is to return part of a lien for the maintenance of the property. And that concludes my presentation. Council President.
Okay, questions from council members?
Council President?
Go right ahead.
R. 201-25, can you talk a little bit more about the plans for parking?
Sure. So the parking deck in total will have a total of 400 spaces. There are a total of 100 spaces there right now for the City Hall building, this is included for city employees as well as visitors. 200 spaces will be dedicated to the residential parts of the Center of Excellence resident, where they have units behind there. And then 100 spaces, that's dedicated to the office slash commercial that's going to be on top of the parking deck. What I will say about 200 spaces dedicated to the Center of Excellence, 200 spaces, of course, for the City Hall or office, those spaces will only be used on, in most cases, at eight to five bases, so they will be available to share. In this case, we are getting a surplus of parking at this level.
Director Phil, could you explain, like, expand on sharing?
Sure. Because right now, when we're at City Hall and it's currently used for our parking lot, our parking lot is available for parking after 5:00 for free. So we have churches, we have other residents that can use our parking and not get a ticket. This will be the same thing for looking at the Center of Excellence.
Other council members have questions?
Yes, Council President?
Go right ahead.
All right, so you said 75 parking spaces will be underneath the residential apartments, right, and 200 across the street. Did you do an impact study on traffic and congestion in the area?
So that will be done when it's presented to the planning board. So what's being presented to you now is the designation for the parking deck itself for the Planning Board's site plan approval. It's going to be required to do a traffic impact study for the parking deck itself and for the Center of Excellence residential.
Okay, and this is all affordable housing, correct?
100%.
Can you define affordable housing?
Sure. In this case, this is being subsidized by, Aspire is being subsidized by low-income housing tax credit, as well as potentially looking at new market tax credit. What that means is that it has to follow the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. So for example, it has to range between 30% and 80% of the area median income. So when we're talking about an apartment that's going to be for rent, that's at the 30% of the area median income, if we say the area median if we say the area median income is seventy-five thousand, that means that that person cannot make more than twenty-five thousand a year in income. Therefore, a studio apartment for them is going to be six hundred. Now, the highest amount, looking at someone that's making sixty percent of the area median income, if you look at sixty percent, they're only making close to between forty-five to fifty thousand a year. The highest they would pay for a three-bedroom is one thousand eight hundred and thirty, so eighteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so those apartments will be between six hundred and eighteen hundred?
And thirty.
And thirty a month, yes.
Okay, eighteen hundred and thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And this is a thirty-year tax incentive that we gave them?
This, yes. This tax incentive, it's backed by the Housing and Mortgage Financing. So yes, it's at six point eight-two percent.
Are they contributing to the renovations for the Center of Excellence, as well as the parking deck in the back of City Hall?
So, looking at the Center of Excellence itself, we are getting roughly three point five million dollars that will go towards construction for the parking deck. We're getting two point five million dollars.
Do we have the total of how much the parking deck will cost?
We have an estimate, but that financial agreement is not being presented to you tonight.
So we have an estimate, but we just can't know tonight? But we're expected to vote on these items?
You're not voting on the estimate. You're voting on the designation of the parking deck. So what we do with every item, we present the study to you. We present the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement, which has the cost of the project cost.
Okay, so a ballpark figure of?
Fifty-four million dollars.
Fifty-four million dollars, and they are contributing two point five, and the taxpayers will absorb?
Absolutely not. That's why they're going for the Aspire tax credit, as well as we passed in the past, the clean, it was the CPACE, which this allows for funding when you're looking at a sustainability structure. So what we have is an opportunity, is that a developer is leveraging the tax credits and the incentives that are available by the state. The city is not funding the construction of the deck.
Okay, so the developer is gonna contribute two point five for something that's roughly around fifty-four million, correct?
What they're paying for is a land purchase price. They are not contributing for that construction, so that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying they are contributing two point five million to purchase the building from us, as well as a community benefit for construction. We will maintain the use of a hundred spaces, as well as any other spaces that are leased from the office spaces. The developer for the Center of Excellence is actually paying for the two hundred spaces.
For the two hundred, so that's two point five.
No, that's not what they're paying. So again, we're not presenting the cost of the construction. We are presenting the designation of the agreement.
Okay, gotcha.
Further questions from council members? In the lot now, we have a hundred spaces available. How much of, what percentage of the lot is used daily during the, during the workday?
Well, we have, we have all of our fleet vehicles that are parking in there now. We have employee parking, as well as our visitors. So right now, it's using, I would say, ninety percent. But again, it's not just for city employees.
Mm-hmm, it's for visitors as well. You indicated there's solar and so forth there. Is there any hookups for electric vehicles, cleaning?
There should be a total of about thirty electric charging stations included.
Okay.
So we have a total of twenty-one hybrid vehicles in our fleet.
Okay. Would those, any of those electric charging stations be available for residents of the affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like a good feature. Other questions from council members before we ask for consensus?
Council President?
Yes.
One more question?
Sure.
The solar panels, the energy, who will be able to utilize the energy or benefit from that?
So the energy is going to go, one, to charging the electric charging stations, but it's also going to a battery storage backup. That battery storage backup could be redistributed through the parking deck itself for lights and cameras and so forth, and also for the City Hall building.
Okay, has there been any thought to distribute that to the community? I know that PSENG is talking about going up twenty percent, and many people will be impacted by that. And that's such a large structure there with all of the solar panels. So if not there, have we thought about having solar fields or doing projects like that elsewhere to help?
It's a consideration, and we have to work out the agreement with PSENG. But right now, we need to do the analysis on the load that's gonna be captured.
Okay, last one too. Did this go before the HPC? Did they weigh in on this at all? Because City Hall is historic. This is the parking lot, so did they weigh in on this at all?
So this is a city-owned property, and we are exempt from the HPC. Again, we are not touching the historic property. We are subdividing it, only talking about the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Please remove.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, R two oh one and R two oh two, you can vote on that separately.
Okay. So do you have consensus for R two hundred and two oh three?
Yes.
All those?
And two oh four.
And two oh four as well? And two oh four. Do we have consensus for those three?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions from those three? That's two hundred, two oh one and two oh four. Okay, hearing none, those should be added to the voting meeting. Two oh two and two oh three will be voted on separately. Or two oh one and two oh two. Right? Okay. Will the Department of Health and Social Services present their items?
Okay, I'm gonna be speaking.
Thank you.
On behalf of Director Brown. So the first resolution he has is a resolution condemning federal public health funding cuts as dangerous, irresponsible, and detrimental to the residents of the city of Plainfield and communities across America. We're all aware of the attempt to cut the federal budget by eleven billion dollars for the Department of Health, and we know that this will disproportionately impact low-income communities, immigrants, communities of color, and it will absolutely have a detrimental impact in Plainfield. These cuts threaten programs like WIC, our vaccine programs, our nutrition programs, Meals on Wheels. And so, we are, we are looking to, you know, we're obviously very worried about this, and this is something that we are strongly condemning. The next resolution that he has is a resolution to extend the contract that we have with Proceed, Inc., and this is for five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. They are the company that we use for lead remediation and abatement, and that is fully grant-funded by the DCA. So that's when we do lead inspections, and then they need abatement work and remediation. Proceed, Inc. has been doing that work, and not at a cost to the residents.
Okay, any questions from council members regarding those items?
Council President, R two oh six, have we gotten any data around the lead abatement specific to the city? Any numbers?
In terms of what?
In terms of the residential's.
Like, how many? You mean for the inspections that we've been doing? So that's separate than this. This is what we do, our normal lead inspections. I think you're speaking, are you speaking about the big grant that we got to do the program that goes into every building? And they have to call and sign up? That's, this is not, this is not the vendor that we're using for that. That, we're using a shared service with the Town of Elizabeth, the City of Elizabeth. This is our normal lead inspection, where they go in when there's children. So it's, it would be, it's a different program.
Is there any data on that?
I'll ask Director Brown.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add these to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, these shall be added. The Department of Communications Technology.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
And thank you, councilors. I'm presenting Resolution two oh seven twenty-five, authorizing the city of Plainfield to purchase Telview B two thousand system and related cloud services in an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. What this is, is that we're upgrading PCTV, as you know, which is our community broadcast platform, and we're making it a little more modern and flexible. And this is a standard for community broadcasting, you know, in the twenty-first century. What this upgrade means, it modernizes how we produce, schedule, and share video content across both traditional cable and new digital platforms. With the implementation of Telview, PCTV will have the ability to automate remote scheduling of programming, live and on-demand streaming online, including mobile and smart TV access, cloud-based storage and management of videos, and significantly improved accessibility tools like automatic captioning in multiple languages. What it means for residents, they'll no longer be limited to watching PCTV only on Comcast or Verizon channels. They'll be able to watch city council meetings, community events, special programming, live or on-demand on their phones, tablets, or laptops. They'll be able to search and navigate content more easily, thanks to enhanced content organization and streaming interfaces. And they'll be able to access content even if they missed a broadcast or no longer subscribe to cable. For those of our residents who may be hard of hearing or whose primary language isn't English, our new captioning system will make sure that everyone can be a part of the conversation. That's, those are the highlights. We chose to go to Telview over Leitronics, which is what we were utilizing before. It's, Leitronics is basically rooted, it's an analog cable platform, and Telview offers true digital-first functionality with built-in scalability for future growth, better streaming features, more reliable content management, and overall an improved viewer experience. So.
Okay, questions from council members regarding this resolution? Hearing is saying none, I'll ask if there's consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, this should be added to the voting meeting. We move to the Department of Solid Waste and Sewer.
That's gonna be me again.
Thank you.
Okay, there are three resolutions for the Department of Sewer and Solid Waste. The first one is authorizing approval to utilize Tilcon Company for the transfer station improvement project. This is the road resurfacing, so they're going to be doing paving when you pull into the transfer station, and they'll be doing that road. So that will be much smoother for everybody who travels that way. And then, they have a resolution authorizing approval to utilize Safeli and Son Contractors, and this is gonna be for the replacement of the tipping floor and the curbing in an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. They're gonna be replacing it with concrete. The next resolution is somewhat related to that because they had first gone out to bid to see if they could replace it with a different material, not concrete. Those bids came in at over five hundred thousand dollars. So considering that we're gonna spend a hundred and twenty-three thousand, that was just way too high. So we're rejecting both of those bids, those half-million-dollar bids, and that's what that last resolution is.
Okay, do we have any questions from council members? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that should be added to the voting meeting. We'll now move on to ordinances on first reading. BA, please present the ordinances listed.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have seven ordinances for your review this evening. The first one, we spoke about a little bit earlier. This is the annual ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit that we're going to have to do prior to the resolution being read for the introduction of the budget. The second one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the no-parking ordinance, and this is gonna be no parking on the south side of Watchon Ave, on the twelve-hundred block. This is a response to resident complaints and conversations that we've had with residents in that area. The third one is an amendment to the ordinance, amending Chapter seventeen land use ordinance. This is for our primary and accessory dwelling units. So in an effort to increase affordable housing and availability and promotes sustainability, we are going to change a little bit the application process for accessory dwelling units to make it easier, and that will just go in front of zoning now, not in front of planning. This will just promote efficient, more efficient land use. The next one that we have is a tax, an ordinance granting a tax exemption, and this is for, I don't think you want me to read all these block and lots, so I'll just say that this is regarding the homeownership of small lots that we've been talking about. So we've been talking, I think we've been talking about this for the past three or four meetings or so. These are the six one-family houses and the one-two-family house. And this is the one where the money that the city is getting from selling this land is going to go into the residents who purchase these properties, and in the form of a down payment. And then, the tax exemption will also be passed on to the resident buyers. So for ten years, they'll know exactly what they're going to be paying because it's spelled out in the tax exemption for them. The next one that we have is a transfer of a redevelopment agreement and a financial agreement. So the council already voted on the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement, but there is a sale of this property, so it is a transfer from eight oh three South Urban Renewal and eight oh three Urban Renewal, and authorizing the execution of an assignment and assumption agreement in connection therewith. The following one is an ordinance adopting the JFK Muhlenberg Hospital Redevelopment Plan Amendment, and this is an amendment that will add additional uses to that redevelopment plan. And finally, we have an ordinance that is repealing some of the twenty-twenty-two amendments that we made to the ordinance regarding the HPC. And this will give more review authority to the HPC. And that concludes the ordinances that we're presenting this evening.
Questions from council members?
Yes. With regard to MC twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen, Director Fields, if you can just kind of briefly give like an overview as to what can and cannot be done with regard to an accessory dwelling? Some of my constituents believe that you can only build above a garage, but I understand that you can build from the ground up an accessory dwelling, and just talk about the setback requirements, and are we gonna have a low tolerance for these items that should, the property owner should feel the need to go before our zoning board for variance?
Sure. So just to back up to the zoning board, what's gonna make this affordable is that you can go to our zoning officer. So the reason why we wanted to give the approval authority to our zoning officer because what we're looking at here is zones that are R one, R two, and R three, which range from low-density to moderate-density residential, which means that you're looking at a single-family home. This would allow you to build another structure. You can choose to build another structure on top of an existing foundation that may be a garage, or it may be a part of your home that's only one-story, and you're able to go up twenty-four feet. You can also build another structure in the rear or side of your property. You have to adhere to the bulk standards or the setback requirements for whatever zone you're in, whether you're in R one, R two, or R three. In most cases, when you're looking at the setbacks from a property line, you're talking about ten feet from the property line.
Follow-up question. In the property owner, they can do bedrooms, bathrooms, they can do plumbing,
In the property owner, they can do bedrooms, bathrooms, they can do plumbing, the whole nine. This is a, for living.
Right. So it's meant to be a self-sustaining unit, meaning that it has a bathroom, it has a kitchen, it has a bedroom. It cannot be any larger than 800 square feet, which is what is allowed for our one-bedroom apartments. They have to be a minimum of 750 square feet. So this is a large one-bedroom apartment.
All right, stay right there, because I have a question about MC 2025-18 with regard to the down payment assistance and the tax, is it a tax abatement that the property would be getting, as opposed, it's not a pilot, it's a tax abatement?
Well, it is a payment in lieu of taxes. So we're passing on a payment in lieu of taxes on to the home buyer. So what that will be is up to duration, because these are deed-restrictive properties. We want to keep them affordable where they're not flipped. Where they will have for the single-family homes, it's gonna be a 10% tax abatement, so 10% of the cost, which is roughly about half of what conventional taxes would be. And for the two-family home, it's gonna be 12.5%.
You know, it's awesome that the little guy can benefit from these incentives. And with regard to the down payment assistance and the deed restriction, so particularly the deed restriction, the deed restriction is for 10 years, correct?
Yes.
And when the deed restriction has expired, pretty much the seller can, they don't have any, they can sell the property for whatever the market value is, once the deed restriction expires. So it's sort of like the city helps our residents to create wealth.
All right. These are meant to be starter homes. Our incentives are for first-time home buyers in Plainfield. So instead of us collecting for our properties, the cost of the property or a community benefit, we're passing that on in the form of down payment assistance for $30,000 for the Plainfield residents. And also, these buildings right now, if they were to sell at market value, they would go for roughly about $800,000. They're being sold starting at 500. They're for bedroom homes.
That's awesome. Thank you, Director. Those are my questions, Council President.
Thanks.
Council President, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
For MC 2025-20, are there any zoning regulations that govern educational buildings and behavioral health facilities?
So right now, looking at the distance, this is within the distance requirements.
Okay, what's the distance?
So if it's looking that it has to be so many feet away from it, but we'll give you the exact number, but we are consistent with it.
Director, regarding MC 2025-17, can you talk about staffing capacity to handle this? With all of these applications going to the zoning officer, I'm assuming that that's a one-person title. So is there any concerns about the increased volume for that one particular person, the length of time it's going to take for the residents who put in these applications, who are interested in getting work done on their property, and how long it's gonna take just to go through the approval process, as well as our ability to handle the increased volume of inspections that are going to have to happen as a result of this personal property development?
Sure. So right now, most of our property applications, they start with the zoning officer. So even if you need to go to a variance for the zoning board of adjustments, or go to site plan approval with the planning board, the zoning officer has to review it first at that time anyway. What makes it actually easier for the zoning officer is that she's given authority to review this within a 10-day period versus putting this on the homeowner where they have to go through the application process, which could take up to 45 days before they hear, they have a hearing. In terms of it being on one person, we do have a backup zoning officer now. We are training other zoning officers. In terms of the actual inspection of the property, that's done by the Building and Construction Division. So whether you're looking at the structural inspection, looking at plumbing, engineering, fire, and so on, we have different subcode officials for that, and we have different inspectors for property maintenance.
Thank you for that. I'm aware that you have the different inspectors for the different areas, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and so on and so forth. I think my question is really about capacity, with there being an increase in applications in addition to all the other work people may be trying to get done in their homes, in addition to the development that we have going on, will we have the inspectors to do this?
I think we could always use the increased resources, but right now, we are staffed up because the way I look at this right now, to, for her to review something that has to be referred to the zoning board of adjustment, it's still the same amount of time right now. But we are looking to increase our capacity with the zoning officers.
Anyone else?
Yes, Council President.
Go right ahead.
All right, just for clarification, so we're doing a 10-year, I'm sorry, 2025-18. It's a 10-year tax exemption for building market-rate homes priced between 500 and 650,000, right? And the target income is between 150,000 and 250,000. So you have to make between 150,000 and 250,000 to be qualified for this here. The average or median salary in Plainfield, before you said, I believe, was 73,000?
Yes, 73, between 73 and 75. And what we're looking at now is that this would be workforce-affordable, and most likely this will be two-income homes.
All right, so when we say that this is affordable units, I don't think that this serves the low or moderate families that's in Plainfield. And I was reading this, the contract, and it said, "We're gonna give the land away, we're gonna deed it for a dollar."
Yes, so we can put it back into a down payment assistance fund.
A dollar.
So I wouldn't look at it as a dollar. I would look at it as that for every property, we're getting 30,000 and giving that back to the home buyer.
Okay. Quick question. My colleague, Kieran in Real Estate, do they have first-time home buyer programs for people who, to offer down payments? They do have that, correct?
Do you ask me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we're giving away our assets, the city assets, for a dollar for developer to build market-rate homes for people who are struggling to, one day wanna buy a home, but you have to make between 150,000 and 250,000 in order to receive this, to be qualified for this program here. And it's almost like we're giving, essentially, we're giving away the taxpayers' property to developers for free, or in this case, $1,000.
No, that's not what we're doing. What we're doing is creatively looking at our property, which is typically undersized, so it's underutilized. So you all have gone to the trouble of making sure that we have the zoning and the bulk ordinances that looks at property right now that's being vacant and not used, and we've created zoning that will make affordable housing. We've partnered with a developer to look at this property and say, "Well, can we build market-rate homes but make it more affordable to people?" And what we are not giving our property away, we're giving at least 30,000 for each piece of property that's currently undersized and not being used.
Okay, so you said the same thing.
No, I didn't say the same thing at all.
You didn't?
No.
So a dollar, we're giving the property away for a dollar, and return, they're gonna say, "Here's $30,000 for a down payment, but you have to make between 150,000 and 250,000 in order to qualify for this."
So I'm saying that $30,000 for down payment assistance, and we're looking at a range for workforce development affordable for the property. So we're not looking at low income. This is not being subsidized. The difference between this, this is not being subsidized by the uniform housing affordability controls. This is something that we're working on with the developer to invest in first-time home buyers.
All right. So with this, I just don't understand, is there, will there be uniformity with the neighborhoods? Because I know that we have did other projects where undersized lots, people have built homes, and the neighbors on both sides are like, "Why did they build a home like this on this property? And why did the city okay this?"
What do you mean by uniformity?
So certain streets and blocks in Plainfield, the houses kind of look the same on the block?
So it'll fit into the residential context, meaning fit into the residential context with the height and the pitch of the roof? I don't know what else you mean by uniformity.
For instance, on Sloan Boulevard, if you stand on the front porch on most of the properties, you can look down the street, and you can see all the neighbors, unless they have shrubs.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You can look down the street. There's a house, are you familiar, that was built recently, and it's pushed up more to the sidewalk? So now the neighbors, they can't see this way, because when they look, they're looking at a side of a house rather than being able to see their neighbors. So I asked about uniformity, I'm saying, will that be taken into consideration?
So that's talking about the setbacks, which Councilman Graham was talking about earlier. So you're looking at the setbacks where if you, down the street, you could see that there's a 10-foot setback, yes, that does exist, and was taken into consideration.
Okay. I have a few more here. Just read the notes, so I can, don't be long-winded.
Anyone else while he looks? Any other councilperson?
Yes.
Councilwoman, go right ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
MC 2025-20, about the Muhlenberg Services, Muhlenberg Hospital. I wanna know, actually, it's two things I'm gonna bring to your attention, and I wanna know about the addiction services, you know, as, is it the same distance for the health services versus the behavioral health?
The behavioral health is a part of the addiction services.
It is, okay. All right, so it's the, it's the same, it's the same services, everything is combined, you're saying?
So Rutgers Behavioral Health offers addiction rehab services.
Okay, all right. That answered my, that first question. The next question is, the properties that you were speaking about, and the, for the first-time home buyers, the question is, let's just say you have about 300 applicants, and how would it be, how would these applicants be chosen, let's say, everybody has good credit? Who will be doing the choosing? How is that gonna be laid out? What's the plan for that?
It's gonna be a lottery that's going to be hosted by the developer. So let's say we open it at a certain date and time. They'll be accepting applications where you'll have to show proof of income, you'll have to show proof of residencies and other qualifications for creditworthiness. At that point, let's say it opens up at 12:00. The first person that applies, if they qualify, they're in it. The next person that applies, they, they're missing some kind of document or some qualification, they're off the list, then you go to the third person, and so on.
Okay. The third thing, this is not directed at you, but I never got a response. I know I was supposed to do this during resolutions, but I never got a response. For whatever reason, I put in for requests to name Albert Still Mills, the street between Prescott Place and South Second Street. So I don't know, I didn't get a response. I know that Council President responded, but no one else responded. So I wanted to make a motion to name the street after Albert Still Mills, Prescott Place, and South Second Street.
Council, you're looking at me like you wanted to say something.
Council President, I, we're in the workshop session of the meeting, so I, respectfully, Councilwoman, I think this is probably not the appropriate time for such a motion. I think it would be during the voting portion of the meeting that motion could be made.
Okay.
And such a, such a motion would require five votes to be added to the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so when should I make that motion?
During the voting meeting, so that's when we come back, after recess.
You got it.
Okay. Other questions from council members?
I'm ready.
All right.
Good. I'll just read this, I won't be long. All right, so 2025-20, the amendment, I believe, it shifts focus away from creating a healthcare hub and honoring the Muhlenberg Hospital legacy. The site was supposed to address the healthcare gaps. We did an assessment in 2014. So now creating general education K through 12, it completely shifts the focus from there. K through 12 schools, as we know, bring on heavy traffic, school buses. That also undermines what we were supposed to be doing as far as, we spoke about earlier, the safe routes to school goes. So instead of enhancing pedestrian and cyclist safety, added school traffic could danger that. Also, we'd like to include the inadequate parking. So we said one-to-one, which is in the proposal, the ratio, so that's for teachers and staff that ignore student drivers, who, sophomores, juniors and seniors, or juniors and seniors who have cars and drive to school, visitors, part-time staff, and that will lead to more congestion throughout the city. So we've been changing the character of our entire city, and it's becoming a Jersey City in Elizabeth with all of the congestion on the streets. So for us to now say, "We're gonna shift from making this a healthcare hub to now saying, 'Okay, we're gonna do a K through 12, or for educational purposes here at this site,'" it just undermines the complete original proposal and purpose, I believe.
Any other councilman? Or councilwoman? Okay.
And also on the 2025-21, and I will just bring the notes up to this as well. All right, so I'm actually happy to see that it's being restored in the ordinance, which had never been removed in the first place. Outside of it being election season, what prompted you to restore the ordinance, the changes in the ordinance that were removed from the HPC?
Council President, I'm sorry, but that question is awfully argumentative. I don't know how a director could possibly answer that.
You want me to restate it? Okay. I'll read it verbatim. What prompted you to restore this now, it shouldn't have been removed in the first place, what prompted you to restore these things now, and what is in place to protect them and say, "Okay, you have it now, but in the future, we will make the changes again."
Council President, if I can address that, policy changes happen all the time. We're never really prompted to ask why we made the change. We offer up specific policy for this council, this governing body, to review. The council body, the council members can consider that and ultimately decide. But generally, it's never asked about the, what prompted a switch. Policies are, there are a million reasons why policies can change. It could be the constituency, it could be the public speaking out, it could just be recognizing what the issues are that are facing the HPC right now. I don't know if it's fair to ask a particular department head to answer that question, other than to say, "We're offering this policy this evening. We're willing to debate the merits of the change with any council member or answer any questions that you might have." But to say what prompted it, I don't think is relevant to the inquiry.
And I'll just add that, like I said with MC-
Quiet in the gallery, please, thank you.
Like I said with MC 2025-16, that we are, you know, responsive to resident complaints, you know, we're responsive to conversations that we're having with residents.
Thank you. Other questions? So the redevelopment areas, we said that they are exempt, historic districts are exempt, right? Is that right? Redevelopment areas within historic districts are exempt?
Yes, redevelopment.
So I don't believe that they should be exempt, so when you look at towns like Fanwood, Scotch Plains, when they weigh in, the architectural designs are more appealing. When you look at Plainfield, the things that's going on, they are unappealing, and it doesn't look like they will stand the test of time, almost looks like low quality. So if you just take a trip down South Avenue and ride through those towns, once you get to Plainfield, you can see the difference here. So I believe that having the HPC weigh in on those decisions should, that should also be in here as well. So I believe that having the HPC weigh in on those, um, decisions should, should, that should also be in here as well. Code enforcement is another thing that I don't see in here, um, that should be included. So code enforcement, people have issues across the city with code enforcement. Uh, but many of the, the residents in the HPC and historic districts always complain about things that are going on, so who enforces those rules? So if we're gonna really make this change, which I think this is great, it's a great start down the right path, but this can also use much more.
So just to clarify, in terms of the redevelopment areas, the Historic Preservation Commission still reviews those properties. Just like we have our technical review committee where we have our shade tree commission that weighs in on any of the landscape. The Historic Preservation, they also weigh in on any properties. We, the last property that we had that was a redevelopment area in a historic area, they provided eight pages of comments that were all accepted and incorporated by the developer. We also had other properties that they weighed in and there were changes made in the architecture to accommodate the context of the historic area. In terms of the property maintenance, property maintenance, if it is in a, in, within a historic area. They are required to consult with the Historic Preservation Secretary that will escalate and coordinate any hearings as necessary with the Historic Preservation Commission that is currently in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, thank you Director, uh, for those explanations. What I'm observing, uh, through this process, um, is that building and providing affordable housing is, is very hard. It's, it's very difficult to do. There's many calculations and formulas that, uh, need to be employed in order to bring costs down for residents. And the city of Plainfield as a whole aims to bring different types of affordable housing. There's gonna be affordable housing, uh, for varying income ranges, uh, it's not a one size fits all, uh, in terms of affordable housing. Obviously, in this meeting format, we go one by one. So as we look at a particular housing project, uh, or, or affordable housing, uh, situation. You know, y- y- you may not agree with that one, or maybe you don't qualify for that particular one, or maybe, but maybe you know someone who does. Plainfield is a very diverse community with people of all income ranges, and certainly we need affordable housing for all of them. You know, so my hope is that, you know, we look at them individually and, and, and think about those other than ourselves in some instances when we look at the different affordable housing, uh, options. In terms of, uh, the accelerate, uh, accessory dwelling unit, I just wanted to make, uh, just one clarification, cause I think, um, initially it was stated that it goes from the central planning board to the zoning board. But, uh, you know, I know that the central planning, the zoning board is really the most restrictive, most difficult, most expensive board. The central planning board is a little less requirements, but still expensive for homeowners to apply before the, the central planning board. You usually need an attorney, uh, who's, uh, well versed in the laws, there's very, very, uh, detailed notice requirements. So it costs a lot of money in order to go before the zoning board or the central planning board. So what the change is proposing, uh, is that it go before a zoning officer. So what that means is that you simply submit your, your application directly to the city, not one of the boards that, you probably need an attorney. And, you know, spend several thousand dollars on legal fees in order to do. But you're able to just submit your application as a resident to the zoning officer and them have the authority to rule, uh, on, on, on your application, uh, for your accessory dwelling unit. So essentially it's just trying to make it more user friendly, give our zoning officer the ability, uh, to, instead of having to send it to other, to the zoning board or the central planning board, she can handle it herself, uh, or himself, whoever's, uh, whoever's in. So th- th- these are all good things, uh, I believe. So, uh, with that, I took up a little time, but I'll, if anybody generated additional questions, uh, I'll give a opportunity.
I just wanna, just make a quick comment regarding the accessory dwelling, um, ordinance that, uh, will be voted on. I was alluding to making sure that we don't send our property owners to the zoning board, I want us to have a very low tolerance where they would be discouraged from seeking a variance for the accessory dwelling. Just stick to the rules, let that be that, if you don't qualify, um, then that's that. You know, I don't want to see accessory dwelling applications need a variance to do outside of the scope of what's written in the, uh, ordinance.
Well, the encouragement, as the council president was mentioning, it's an application fee of $50 for the zoning officer versus $2,500 for the zoning board of adjustment.
Okay, all right. So with that, uh, I'll ask if there's consensus to add these items to the voting meeting, and I'm sensing that there'll be some, so which items do we want to pull first?
Yeah.
You doing all set?
During the regular meeting, they are, they're all loaded on.
Okay, all right. Okay, so these items will be added to the voting meeting. All right, you want to do the?
At, at this point, I believe we wanted to, uh, consider resolution 17625, uh, appoint the OEM coordinator. So at this point, you would just need a motion to suspend the regular order of business to move that 17625 be approved.
Can we have such motion?
So moved.
Can we have a roll call? Well, we'll do voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any, any opposition or abstention? Okay. Make it a little easier for you. All right, so now that that has been approved, uh, we'll, uh, do the, the swearing in of our new officer.
And before I come down to administer the oath of office, I wanted to point out the fact that there are several deputies, deputy OEM coordinators, and those individuals are yours truly, Business Administrator Abby Levinson, Abu Bakar Jalloh, the city clerk, Information Technology Director Jas Cliden Hunt, Public Works Department Director Orin K. Dabney Senior, Police Department James Abney, Police Department Lieutenant Mahasa Alameen. Yes, you can clap for that. And in our fire department, I'm proud to also say Deputy Chief Damon Selkett is also one of our deputy OEM coordinators. We also have Lieutenant Malcolm Alston, and the Board of Education is represented by Christopher Payne. Those are our deputy OEMs. And at this time, I would ask Keisha Batia, Sergeant Keisha Batia to come forward to receive the oath of office. I, Keisha El-Batia.
I, Keisha El-Batia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office.
All of the duties of the office.
Required by me as emergency management coordinator.
Required by me, emergency management coordinator.
Of the city of Plainfield.
Of the city of Plainfield.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further, further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear truth to the allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true fear and allegiance to the same. I was doing good.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. She has done this oath at least three times.
All right. Sergeant Batia, did you want to give any words? Did you want to give any words?
Yes.
All right, go right ahead.
I sure do. If you know me, I like to talk. But I'm not gonna talk long, but I do want my cert team to stand up and I want to acknowledge them because I know they've been here for But first and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and the administration, and also the council, as well as Director Childress for his continued support and guidance. You know, as Ms. Abby Levinson stated earlier, that he served a long term as OEM coordinator, but he passed the torch to me. So I do appreciate the opportunity, so I will be here to serve if anyone know me and you've seen me in the community. I always say, you know, when you supersize your serve, God will supersize your blessings. So I will continue to educate the community when it comes to preparedness, and I'm just excited to hit the ground running, and I want to thank you. And I want to thank my court, my deputies as well, so thank you, thank you, thank you ladies.
Wow, that's awesome. It's like the Hidden Figures of OEM up there. Beautiful, beautiful bunch. Okay. Yes, let's get a picture, um, let's get a picture of the Hidden Figures. Beautiful flowers. As soon as we get a good picture, I'm a re, I'm a adjourned, I don't want everybody walking every, in front of the picture. All right, we'll take a five minute recess. Okay, council, come on, come on up.
Recording stopped.
Okay. The floor is now open for any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Is there anyone online?
Yes, there is with their hand raised.
Okay. Person online, are you calling regarding MC 2025-13?
Caller, you need to unmute yourself for us to hear you, you're still muted.
Okay, let's move on. I am, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any opposition or abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Counsel members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That if unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-14 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-14 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union. Adopting the TODD South Redevelopment Plan Amendment dated February 20th, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on March 12th, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open for any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage. On first reading, first reading. Clerk, roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-14, counsel members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
Just in favor, one opposed, ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-16 by title and certify its compliance.
MC 2025-15 is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Two million eight hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred forty-two and seventy-two cents.
And just to remind everybody, this is first reading, which has to go before the adoption of the logic.
Okay, this is first reading. Okay, so all we need is a motion and a second to entertain this on first reading.
So moved.
Second. Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-15, counsel members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-17.
We're going now to public comments for resolutions.
Okay.
We'll do the other first reading ordinances after the resolutions.
Okay. So we will now open it up for our public comments on resolutions being considered this evening. Floor is now open, each speaker will be given three minutes. For anybody online, the instructions are contained on the website. The floor is now open for resolutions being considered this evening. State your name and address and the resolution you're speaking regarding.
Good evening, Sam Sekita Cooper, North Plainfield, New Jersey. I actually have a point of clarification for myself, is this the regular public comment or just specific to these?
Just specific to those.
Okay, so I don't know the ordinance number, but it's in reference to the accessory housing. And my comment and question is, will there be a specific board for the applications? I heard you say that there might be a lottery for certain things. As far as, as far as the buildings that we were talking about with the 500 to 650,000 dollars, those particular houses. But when it comes to the accessory units, I wanted to know, is there a specific committee? Will the neighbors have to be noticed? Will there be emails? How will you go about making sure that the residents who live here, which again, I love the whole idea of the accessory units. How will we go about making sure that everybody knows that that's available? The ease that you were talking about on making sure that we know that it's not going to be this $2,500 burden and it's only going to be $50, which I think is awesome. So how will we go about communicating that? Making sure that those of us who have houses, who may need to have multi-generational living? And make the best use of accessory units? How will we go about that? So I'm sure you're still in the working stages of that, I'm sure you can't answer that tonight. But that is one of the things that I would love to hear about. And that's it for that resolution, I'll be back for the other part.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll have the director answer that once all the public comments are done.
Yeah, Nancy P. of 1129 Myrtle Avenue. Two, one resolution, 197-25 pertains to the Madison Avenue. I believe the mayor asked a question about who was a former owner. While I was sitting here, I looked up the Sanborn fire maps and in 1904, it was the E.H. Holmes Coal and Wood Company owned part of the property toward the railroad tracks. And in 1910, the Wadley and Good Enough Coal and Wood Company owned it. And they owned it until they changed their name about 1940 to Wadley and Smith. So there's a progressive area in that area where there were coal and lumber yards along the railroad track. The gas company, I believe, was across the street where the old bilingual daycare center was. But those maps are available at the Princeton University Archives if you need to look up and get more information. And also for 2025-17 for the accessory buildings. I appreciated the commentary about it, but it is still a little bit confusing. If the zoning officer, if somebody decides to do that and if the zoning officer decides that you do need a variance? Then would it have to go before one of the appropriate boards? Or who makes that decision? It kind of bounces off the other lady's question, I mean, the zoning officer is giving that much power and she determines, if everything, the bulk standards are good, then fine. But what happens if the bulk standards aren't good and if a variance is needed? Then the zoning officer is going to refer it to the zoning board or the planning board or the appropriate board, thank you.
Good question. All right, come on up.
Quaney Palmer Chandler, 1227 East Front Street, Apartment 43B. I want to, I want to comment on the introduction of ordinance first reading, MC 2025-18. And the question I had is with the deed restriction, does the deed restriction put in writing that these homes are for Plainfield residents only? Is that part of the deed restriction? Also, do we actually know the number of single-headed households in Plainfield? And the number of people who actually make between 100,000 and 150,000 dollars a year? Because if that number does not reach where we need to reach? Does that mean that we go outside of the city of Plainfield to find those people who qualify for these single-family houses? We have a lot of single-family female houses, a lot of women taking care of children, who should be able to buy homes to do that? And if they don't reach that threshold, who does it go to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal Corano, 1284 East Front Street. That's a very good question, actually. I'm speaking on 2025-17. I am confused and I'm in real estate. Last month, councilman said, when I questioned a building that was being built, developed, worked on? That the owner had conversations and the owner may not have understood the rules and the regulations. Although it's the fifth, sixth home, literally within 1,000 feet of that building. Having said that, this week, I'm hearing, well, we just don't want everybody.
Regarding this ordinance specifically. Is there anyone online?
Yes, there is with their hand raised.
Okay. Person online, are you calling regarding MC 2025-13?
Caller, you need to unmute yourself for us to hear you. You're still muted.
Okay, let's move on. I am, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any opposition or abstentions? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, madam deputy, please read MC 2025-14 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-14 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union adopting the TODD South Redevelopment Plan Amendment dated February 20th, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on March 12th, 2025.
Okay. Floor is now open for any member of the public who'd like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage. On first reading, first reading.
Second.
Clerk, roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-14, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, madam deputy, please read MC 2025-16 by title and certify its compliance.
MC 2025-15 is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, $2,882,742.72.
And just to remind everybody, this is first reading, which has to go before the adoption of the logic.
Okay, this is first reading. Okay. So, all we need is a motion and a second to entertain this on first reading.
So moved.
Second. Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-15, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
Okay, madam deputy, please read MC 2025-17.
We're going now to public comments for resolutions.
Okay.
We'll do the other first reading ordinances after the resolutions.
Okay. So we will now open it up for our public comments on resolutions being considered this evening. Floor is now open. Each speaker will be given three minutes. If anybody online, the instructions are contained on the website. The floor is now open for resolutions being considered this evening. State your name and address and the resolution you're speaking regarding.
Good evening, Sam Sekita Cooper, North Plainfield, New Jersey. I actually have a point of clarification for myself. Is this the regular public comment or just specific to these?
Just specific to those.
Okay. So, I don't know the ordinance number, but it's in reference to the accessory housing.
Mm-hmm.
And my comment and question is, will there be a specific board for the applications? I heard you say that there might be a lottery for certain things. As far as, as far as the buildings that we were talking about with the $500,000 to $650,000, those particular houses. But when it comes to the accessory units, I wanted to know, is there a specific committee? Will the neighbors have to be noticed? Will there be emails? How will you go about making sure that the residents who live here, which again, I love the whole idea of the accessory units, how will we go about making sure that everybody knows that that's available? The ease that you were talking about on making sure that we know that it's not going to be this $2,500 burden and it's only going to be $50, which I think is awesome. So, how will we go about communicating that? Making sure that those of us who have houses, who may need to have multi-generational living and make the best use of accessory units? How will we go about that? So, I'm sure you're still in the working stages of that. I'm sure you can't answer that tonight, but that is one of the things that I would love to hear about. And that's it for that resolution. I'll be back for the other part.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll have the director answer that once all the public comments are done.
Yeah, Nancy P. of 1129 Myrtle Avenue. Two, one resolution, 197-25 pertains to the Madison Avenue. I believe the mayor asked a question about who was a former owner. While I was sitting here, I looked up the Sanborn Fire Maps, and in 1904, it was the E.H. Holmes Coal and Wood Company owned part of the property toward the railroad tracks. And in 1910, the Wadley and Good Enough Coal and Wood Company owned it. And they owned it until they changed their name about 1940 to Wadley and Smith. So, there's a progressive area in that area where there were coal and lumber yards along the railroad track. The gas company, I believe, was across the street where the old bilingual daycare center was. But those maps are available at the Princeton University Archives if you need to look up and get more information. And also for 2025-17 for the accessory buildings, I appreciated the commentary about it, but it is still a little bit confusing. If the zoning officer, if somebody decides to do that, and if the zoning officer decides that you do need a variance, then would it have to go before one of the appropriate boards? Or who makes that decision? It kind of bounces off the other lady's question. I mean, the zoning officer is giving that much power and she determines, if everything, the bulk standards are good, then fine. But what happens if the bulk standards aren't good and if a variance is needed? Then the zoning officer is going to refer it to the zoning board or the planning board or the appropriate board. Thank you.
Good question. All right. Come on up. Name, address, and resolution you're speaking regarding.
Quaney Palmer Chalmers, 1227 East Front Street, Apartment 43B. I wanted, I want to comment on the introduction of ordinance first reading, MC 2025-18. And the question I had is with the deed restriction, does the deed restriction put in writing that these homes are for Plainfield residents only? Is that part of the deed restriction? Also, do we actually know the number of single-headed households in Plainfield and the number of people who actually make between $100,000 and $150,000 a year? Because if that number does not reach where we need to reach, does that mean that we go outside of the city of Plainfield to find those people who qualify for these single-family houses? We have a lot of single-family female houses, a lot of women taking care of children, who should be able to buy homes to do that. And if they don't reach that threshold, who does it go to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sal Corano, 1284 East Front Street. That's a very good question, actually. I'm speaking on 2025-17. I am confused and I'm in real estate. Last month, councilman said, when I questioned a building that was being built, developed, worked on, that the owner had conversations and the owner may not have understood the rules and the regulations, although it's the fifth, sixth home, literally within 1,000 feet of that building. Having said that, this week, I'm hearing, well, we just don't want everybody requesting or asking or seeking because it is only 50 bucks, not 2,500 bucks. Well, if it's 50 bucks, I assure you, everybody is going to seek it. And it's going to be overwhelming for the person and/or department that it's being presented. I don't know if the suggestion should be, there's a cap. If it's 50,000 or below, it could stay in that particular person's hands. Or if it's 50,000 or 100,000 and above, it has to go through the planning or variance or whatever. So, I would reconsider the implications and the unintended consequences that that may bring. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more public hearing.
There are.
Oh, there's somebody online? Okay, great.
There are two people online with their hands raised.
All right. Admit them.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Name, address, and the resolution you're speaking regarding.
Yes, thank you. William Michelson, 556 Belvedere Avenue. I want to talk about 2025-17. I get the feeling there may be a nugget of something legitimate in here, but it's a mess and I'm going to ask the council to table it, and I'll tell you why. Just glancing over this, within minutes, I wrote down six different sections that have problems, and I'm just going to recite them very briefly. In subsection B, these accessory dwelling units cannot be sold. Well, what about whether they're leased? You can't just ignore a lease hold once it's been granted. Maybe the people that are going to live in these units shouldn't be tenants. C, I do not believe that this rule should allow new construction at all. If it were to do that, it needs to go back to the usual process through one of the boards. D, changing the setback rule so that the new unit only has to have a five-foot setback from a property line. Well, the areas of town you're talking about, the rule now ranges from a 10-foot setback to as much as a 50-foot setback. It's not a good idea to just wipe that out all at once. Subsection E, allowing detached accessory dwelling units. I think that's a bad idea. Again, it goes back to the equivalent of building an entirely new home. It should go through the usual board process. Subsection F, about waiving parking spaces. Well, the last time that happened, we got the situation that we have now on South Avenue where there's a constant line of cars parked in the evening and a lot of people still can't find a space. I do not think that waiving parking requirements is a wise thing to do anywhere. And subsection H, allowing the zoning official to make some decisions that normally go to the boards. Well, I realize speeding up and making a process like that far cheaper for the homeowner is a desirable thing, but I don't think this is going to achieve it. Basically, this proposal would simply rezone most of the city from one family to two family. That cannot be done, and it should not be done. Now, there may be some legitimate room here for, let's say, a mother-daughter unit, a family member who has a separate unit with a separate stove, but that's delicate. This is how we got into the problem that now afflicts the Crescent Avenue and Putnam Watch on historic districts where this was allowed back in the 1950s and 60s, letting new units be put in with a hot plate instead of a full stove. And now, all these years later, they're constantly telling us, oh, that's a legal three-family or that's a legal four-family.
Council President Speaker's time has elapsed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Admit the next speaker. Name and address for the.
Good evening.
Name, address, and resolution you're speaking regarding. Thank you.
Sure. Charisse Kuntz, 141 McKinley Place. I'm speaking regarding Resolution MC 2025-17, and that is the resolution regarding the primary and accessory dwelling units. I would like to have, and I don't know that this is the time, some additional clarity on that resolution. I actually had contacted the city for something similar that I wanted to do on my property. And by the time I got all of, excuse me, all of the runaround and, excuse me, contacted an architecture, architect to, you know, do renderings and things like that, it turned out that it would be a very expensive project that I was looking at. So, I'm looking to have a little bit more clarity on what this resolution is actually looking to help residents with. I would love to have the opportunity to do some multipurpose on my garage, to have this big free car garage, but I just need to have some additional clarity on what it is that is looking to be accomplished with this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, seeing none. We will now close public comment for resolutions being considered this evening, Director. There were a couple of questions about ADUs. If you can clarify, please.
Sure. So, to clarify, it does not supersede the bulk standards of each of the districts. For example, R1, the setbacks there are significantly different from R3. The setbacks go as far as 50 feet. For R3, it goes down to 10. This does not make the setbacks the same for every unit that has an accessory dwelling unit. So, if you are in R1, you are looking at the 50-foot setback. If you are in R2, you are looking at the 40-foot setback. If you are in R3, you are looking at as low as 10-foot setback on the side yard. So, just to clarify, this does not supersede and make every unit available for two-family homes because all of these homes have to have a primary residence and the homeowner must occupy the primary structure. Looking at the next question that's related to the zoning officer, how we're going to advertise this. Once, should this be adopted with the zoning officer? We are going to present this at the planning board. We'll present this at our joint boards and commission meeting on May 3rd, which is going to be at the Senior Center at 400 East Front Street. We are going to make this available on the website. Quite often, we have homeowners where several homeowners have come in to me and say it is cost prohibitive to go into making an addition for their children or for their parents. So, this is intended to make it more affordable to build a mother and daughter suite, not to have a go-around to build another structure for a multifamily home at all. This will not allow that. The next question was related to the deed restrictions for the single-family and two-family home, looking at 2025-18. The down payment assistance is going to be available to only Plainfield residents. Residents outside of Plainfield may purchase these homes with the income restrictions, but they will not get the down payment assistance. To answer the question, how many homes, households do we have within Plainfield that are above 150? It's over 1,800 households. 1,853 households are currently available in Plainfield. Did I get all of it?
Yeah, I think that's it. Okay. Thank you. All right, we will now move to the consent agenda. All right. Clerk, can you please announce the consent agenda?
Yes, the consent agenda items have been identified as Resolutions 173-25 through R225 and Resolution 203-25 through R210-25. Non-consent voted separately will be Resolution 201 and 202-25.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. The consent agenda items have been approved. We now move to Resolution 201-25.
Council President, if I may be heard on 201-25.
Sure.
At this time, it's a, we have, there's a request from the administration and the legal department. We like to table this resolution for further technical review. So, at this time, I would recommend a motion to table Resolution 201-25.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call to remove Resolution 201-25, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. 201-25 has been tabled. We now come to Resolution 202-25.
Madam Deputy, please. Motion is second.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call Resolution 202-25, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This resolution has been approved. I believe Councilwoman Briggs Jones had a motion that she wanted to make. Now would be the appropriate time.
Oh, I just wanted to make a motion. Would like to have the street named after Albert Still Mills. It's between Prescott and South Second Street. In his honor, he has, very has been a pillar to the county, to the, to the city of Plainfield. Also was a former social security officer. And the boxing program that he had, a lot of people, a lot of young men have come up under him. And I just wanted to make a motion to have the street named after him.
Second. So, to be clear, the first motion is to add it to the agenda because it's not on the agenda. That requires two-thirds of a vote. Then you need a motion to approve it, and that requires a simple majority.
Okay.
And, Councilwoman, just so I'm clear, you're asking for an honorary designation, right? You're not asking for an actual, the actual street because that would require an ordinance to actually change. This is an honorary title that we'd give to the street.
Right.
Okay.
Similar to what they did with Parliament Funkadelic Way was honorary as well.
Yes, because we have done some where it's permanently and done by ordinance, but this one will be an honorary.
Right.
Okay.
That's great.
And this would be identified as Resolution 2125, so you need a motion to add it to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Any comments?
Councilmember Briggs Jones.
Yes.
I got a comment. I agree with everything that Councilwoman Briggs Jones had said about Albert Mills, and there's a boxing tournament in his name and in his honor. I would like this to be more formal with the presentation like we've done earlier in this meeting regarding this designation in honor for the street. Can we do it like that as opposed to voting on this tonight?
We're asking adding, we want to add this on so that way we can vote it for a second time. That's what we're doing right now.
And then we vote on it and there's, let's just say it passes, there's no presentation, no pictures with the family of Albert Mills or anything like that.
I think what, I think the council is asking if you withdraw your motion so that it can be done in a more formal process.
Right. And that's okay. We could do a more formal process. To have the family here, it's just that I'm asking to have this name. It was, the family actually came to me and asked me to do this a while ago. It will be a ceremony if it happens.
All right, we can do it in two parts. We can bring them back next meeting for the ceremony, should it pass. No objection to that, you know, just to present the resolution. It's fine. Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This resolution has been added to the agenda to 1125. Now you need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Roll call on Resolution 2125, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This resolution has been approved. That concludes resolutions for this evening. And we skipped 15 because we did that during the beginning, so we'll go to MC 2015-16.
Okay. Madam Deputy?
MC 2025-16 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16A, Article 16A, Section 1, Schedule 1, no parking on the south side of Watchong Avenue, the 1200 block.
Okay, this is first reading, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Okay, clerk, roll call.
Roll call MC 2025-16, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
This ordinance has been introduced on first reading unanimously.
Madam Deputy?
MC 2025-17 is an amendment to an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union amending Chapter 17, the Land Use Ordinance, Article 9, Section 17, colon 9, dash 23, buildings or structures per lot, a primary and accessory dwelling units.
Okay, I entertain a motion and a second to adopt this on first reading. So moved. Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call MC 2025-17, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
Okay.
MC 2025-18 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield and the County of Union granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map as Block 109, Lot 41, Block 122, Lot 1, Block 131, Lot 15, Block 209, Lot 4, Block 239, Lot 22, Block 502, Lot 10, and Block 727, Lot 17, and designated in the city's tax records as 608 West 4th Street, 937 West 3rd Street, 1147 South 2nd Street, 45 Brokaw Boulevard, 121 Liberty Street, 659 West 4th Street, and 1261-1263 Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Home Ownership Small Lots Urban Renewal LLC, tax abatement to be transferred to home buyers.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-18, councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
MC 2025-19 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Plainfield authorizing a transfer of redevelopment agreement and financial agreement between the City of Plainfield 803 South Urban Renewal LLC and 803 Urban Renewal LLC, and authorizing the execution of an assignment and assumption agreement in connection therewith.
Okay, I entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call MC 2025-19, councilmembers. Roll call MC twenty twenty five nineteen. Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been introduced on first reading.
MC twenty twenty five twenty is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union adopting the JFK Muhlenberg Hospital Redevelopment Plan, amendment dated February twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Council President, at this time, on behalf of the administration and the Office of Corporation Counsel, we ask that this be tabled for more technical review. So I recommend a motion to table.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
So roll call to table ordinance twenty twenty five twenty. Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
MC twenty twenty five twenty has been tabled.
Okay, madam deputy, read MC twenty twenty five dash twenty one.
MC twenty twenty five twenty one is an amendment to ordinance and repeal certain twenty twenty two amendments of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union amending chapter seventeen, the land use ordinance, article nine, sections seventeen, colon, four dash ten, seventeen, colon, ten dash four, and seventeen, colon, ten dash five, Historic Preservation Commission informational meetings, actions requiring a certificate of appropriateness and referral of permits.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Roll call MC twenty twenty five twenty one. Council members Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been introduced on first reading, and that concludes ordinances for first reading this evening.
Okay. All right, we'll now move to general comments, public comment. Total of thirty minutes has been allocated for all public comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes. If any member of the public would like to call in, please dial the number that's on the website, name and address, speak on any topic at all.
Thank you. Again, Sam Sekita Cooper, North Plainfield, New Jersey. Forgot to mention that I'm actually a local real estate broker here in the city, but I am also a homeowner in the city of Plainfield while I may reside somewhere else. Had to get my little notes together. None of this is a complaint. This is truly just a conversation or just comment to have you think about, and I need a clarification on something. I was told by someone in the Division of Inspections that if you have a property that's located in a flood zone, you are now not allowed to finish the basement. As a real estate broker, when I'm selling homes, one of the points that I point out is, hey, you can finish the basement. I obviously don't want to be giving out the wrong information. So I need to know, and I don't know who would be able to assist me with that, if that's something that's truly in writing, if it's from FEMA, or where can I go about to get that information so that I can do my best job in serving the city and the community. When it comes to the accessory dwellings, I wanted to know, will there, will there be, excuse me, will there be any specific policing or inspections regarding it? Because it's sounding like we're going to be able to build a studio apartment or, you know, something right below eight hundred square feet. So I'm sure some of the homes already have an, I want to say this delicately, overcrowding. So this, of course, will be a way to relieve some of that, but I know there's a challenge with inspections as it is in trying to make sure that houses are not overcrowded. So just wondering, is that something that we're thinking about? Earlier today, I was downtown Plainfield, and I was across the street from the McDonald's. I'm not going to point out the officer, but just know I was there, perhaps talking to one of the officers, and there was a scooter that was on the sidewalk going extremely fast. And the officer attempted to stop the scooter and let them know that they shouldn't be on the sidewalk, and the scooter kept going. So I wanted to know, what are we doing about that? How can we do anything about that? I know that there are challenges as some of those scooters aren't registered as far as, you know, motor vehicle registrations. So how do we combat that? I know that also falls back into us not being able to chase vehicles and so forth, but it's a safety concern. And I understand that there are challenges with those scooters. So I witnessed that, witnessed this myself. This was probably around six PM, and I'm just wondering, how can we, as a community, assist you to assist us? So I think that's it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Nancy P. We're eleven twenty nine Myrtle Avenue. I'm comfy for you tonight with some information. As everybody knows, Muhlenberg and the doctors and the nurses at Muhlenberg, I owe debt of gratitude because they saved my life in nineteen seventy four, and they also saved my life in two thousand when I had to have a blood transfusion. Last week, I got a news alert. Hackensack University Medical Center is now the first in the state to be able to give blood transfusions in the field. The Department, the New Jersey Department of Health recently expanded their blood bank license and regulatory waiver to Hackensack Meridian Health to allow trained paramedics are permitted to carry blood, administer blood transfusions in the field right there on the scene during and during transport. Since Hackensack Meridian has a base in Plainfield, I would hope that Mr., the, the CEO of Hackensack Meridian decides that we are entitled to have a paramedic that is able to give blood transfusions in the field on site at Muhlenberg, at the satellite emergency department and their transport systems. This is relatively new. It's, there's been case studies done that that will save lives in, in case of severe accidents or hemorrhages. And I just want to make the city administration and the council aware that this is a possibility and that Plainfield is not left out of the mix since they cover a wide area. We should be asking Mr. Garrett that we, we have that service available in the city of Plainfield. I'd be happy to give these to the city clerk. That can be passed out because this is a new and upcoming technology, and I think Plainfield deserves it since our hospital was closed by the Department of Health. Thank you.
Again, Kwanee Chambliss, one two two seventies Front Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Even though we have tabled ordinance MC twenty five twenty, I still feel compelled to speak on it because tabled means that it's eventually going to come back. So I'm just really concerned about the expansion of this property being changed to something that accommodates additional educational facilities in the city. All of us were here. The majority of us voted for College Achieve Charter School to enter into a memorandum of understanding with them so that they could expand to that property and either unsbe known to this board or ignored by this board, the mayor, the lawyer, and whoever else. They are currently under investigation by the state and were under investigation by the state in November of twenty twenty four before they came before this board with this great idea of what they would do for our children. And we voted yes to enter into a memorandum of understanding with an organization that is currently under investigation from the state, and that's totally problematic for me. So if you are going to allow this to be another opportunity for a charter school to expand in Plainfield, again, twenty one districts, Plainfield is the only one that sells their education to the lowest bidder. Can you at least do your homework before you vote to make sure that you're not selling our kids to an organization that is currently under investigation from the state for financial imperatives? Almost eight thousand dollars their CEO was making to fail children, and we think that's a good idea to bring them here? So I really question that vote that you did. So if I, if I were to speak, they, you guys would call me to attention while I'm speaking in the audience if you guys up here speaking. So I think the, the word used earlier was things are unfair. I think it's unfair what he's doing. I just want that on the record. I think it's unfair. Also, going back to the single family households, we have a number of families here that are on the section eight program that are having their rent paid, they pay a portion of the rent. Section eight also has a first time homeowner, home buyer program that allows you to have your mortgage paid in the same way. I don't know if we do that in Plainfield. I don't know if we're looking to do that in Plainfield. That would be a really good way to help some of these homeowners who don't make a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever it is, become homeowners. I heard Mr. Hockaday said there are several programs, there are several ways we can do that. It's not just one. Maybe this is one that you guys should look at for another demographic of people that might think. But thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Robert F. Edwards. I live at five ten A West Fourth Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. Back in two thousand and twenty three, I brought to the city council that there's an issue called, there's an emergency in the housing authority, and it's called electromagnetic radiation. What, in simple language, what it means is that there's excessive electricity running through the sockets and through the entire unit. Well, I brought that to the city council, and I brought it to the inspections Department, the Health Department. They came by and looked, and there was really no results. Ultimately, I filed a complaint, and the Roselle Park Municipal Court found probable cause in two thousand and four, two thousand twenty four. Both that department is unfit for human habitation, which is five point, five point oh two and two point two four about the electrical malfunction. Unfortunately, the court did not really rule on the violations. Subsequently, it's now going, it's, it's on its way to Superior Court. That process is already in, in motion. The city council knows about it because he was able to get a copy of what's going on with that issue. In addition to that, there's excessive chemicals, substances coming into the apartment, sending me to the hospital approximately once every, once a month. And I have one, just one of the medical reports that says the air quality in patients' current residence is affecting his health. It is recommended that the building be inspected for air quality slash chemicals. Also, there's another report from another doctor, recommendation that is. Robert Edwards is seen treating our emergency room, four twelve twenty five. Please evaluate the apartment for any electrical abnormalities. These were two different doctors talking about two separate issues that have been merging and intertwining and sending me to the hospital almost every month. I'm asking the city council to look into this, to investigate this, because it's not only affecting me, it's affecting the other tenants. They just don't want to speak up about it. I can't speak for someone else. I know that it's affecting them because they're asking me, what is that smell coming into their apartments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Pamela Dunn, seven fifty West Fourth Street. Couple of comments. I know, I heard something about speed bumps. With all the speed bumps that you're about to install, you think maybe you could put a couple in front of Hubbard School? Because they repaved the street in Hubbard School and they're using it like a speed, like a raceway. Kids are coming out of school. I'm a bus driver. I pull up there every day. It is terrible. My second thing is, Abby, thank you for the crossing guards, but I think that they need some training. Your crossing guards are going to get mashed because this is what they do. They don't look, they just step out. Somebody's going to get hit. They have no control over the kids. I don't know what you're going to do about that. But you need another one on the corner of Eighth and Plainfield Avenue. Please put someone out there. Please, another person. You got one, but he can't handle the traffic, and the kids are just going out there anyway. Okay? I would appreciate that. I would hate to see somebody's kid and a crossing guard get mashed because these people do not stop. They go out around them. Maybe a police officer every now and then might sit out there and discourage this double parking and the ice cream trucks. Okay, let me digress. I'm a bus driver. It's very hectic over there. You got an ice cream truck on Spooner, you got one on Fila Avenue. Right on the corner. These kids are coming out of school, dashing to get the ice cream, and nobody's telling them to either move down or park somebody someplace else. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more. Is anybody online?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Public hearing is closed in person. Will now move to online public hearing, public comment. Name and address for the record.
Once again, William Michelson, five fifty six Belvedere Avenue. Two issues I'd like to bring to your attention, and the common thread is that it's hard in Plainfield half the time to find out where you're going. There are literally hundreds of street corner name signs that are missing at intersections all around town. A lot of the short streets, for instance, in the fourth ward, there's a lot of that. You, there's just nothing there to tell you where you are. There's a lot of additional signs that are either illegible with age or falling down. I really think it requires a citywide program to replace all of the street corner name signs all over the place that need them before somebody dies because the police or the ambulance or someone can't even tell what street they're at. Same theme. We have an ordinance that requires people to have a legible street number on the front of their house or other building. It's section thirteen, colon, eight dash two. And here too, we've got hundreds, if not thousands, of properties around town where there is no street number out front. It would be all right with me if the city pays for it for some people. It would be all right with me if the city issued citations to all these folks to do it, get street numbers so that we can all tell where we are. Finally, I want to thank the mayor for HPC twenty, yeah, the HPC ordinance that was just adopted. It looks pretty good. I checked it out. There might be a detail or two to be tinkered with later, but I, I think it looked right. I am told that the decision that was made in twenty twenty two that we're now reversing was actually inadvertent. Thank you.
There's one more caller.
One more. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Cherie Schoons, one forty one McKinley Place. Again, just have a few comments. First, I'd like to thank Director Abney. I had an issue with one of his offices, and I did call his office, and we were able to address the issue immediately, and I just wanted to let him know that, you know, I appreciate the speed at which he addressed my concern. So I commend you for that, and I thank you for that quick response. The second thing is, you know, I was looking at the presentation by Ms. Fields when she was going through the different renderings with the new, the parking deck and of the, the renderings around the Y, around the Y building that will have that will have the Center of Excellence. And, you know, as I, as I looked at those renderings, I said, I think they're good, but I think the renderings are a little misleading because it did not take into account all of the traffic that all of these new developments are, all of these new developments are going to bring into the city. I'm not sure how many of you have tried to drive from Rock Avenue to Terrill Road in Plainfield. It will take you a very long time. I am really concerned with the amount of traffic and congestion that all of this development is bringing into the city, and that's really concerning to me as a resident. And I'm hopeful that, you know, as we're looking at new developments in the city, we're taking that into consideration because it is very congested already. My last issue is down on the, in my area on McKinley Place, PSCNG is doing the new gas lines, and they're doing a lot of digging up and tearing up of the streets. And maybe this was addressed previously, but I just want to know, is there going to be any repaving? Or like, what's going to happen with the streets? Because, I mean, the, what they've done, you know, I appreciate that we're getting new gas lines, but is there going to be a regrading? And are these roads going to be fixed? Because it's, it's dangerous to your tires driving over this construction that's going on. And that was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more online?
There is one more caller, but their hand isn't raised.
Okay. All right, so public comment is now closed online as well. Did the administration need to respond to anything outstanding?
Just as far as one person mentioning about street signs, we have a crew going around the city trying to replace street signs that are missing across the city. This is what we continue to do until everything's back to where it should be. That's one portion. And the next question, I guess someone mentioned about public service. Yes, there's a restoration plan in place for all roads to be resurfaced over time across the city where we're doing the gas main upgrades and as well as American Water, the work they're doing as well. So that's all, a plan in place.
All right.
A restoration of the roads.
Thank you, Director.
And I have one thing.
Sure.
In regards to the motorbike or bicyclist in the downtown area on the sidewalk, there actually is a ordinance in place. There are signs that we have put up downtown, and we're continuing to put up more. There's no bicycling, no motorbikes, no bikes of anything on the sidewalks in downtown Plainfield. We're going to work on a more comprehensive campaign to get that message out to people in English and Spanish, but it's like anything else. When we get a hold of those motorbikes, we confiscate them. They're not supposed to be on the street. Thank you.
In response to the question about the flood zone, any address that you have that you have a question about being in a flood zone, you can direct it to either the zoning officer themselves. You can direct her to the Building and Construction Office. They'll be able to look it up. Or you can come to the Planning Office. We can look it up for you directly. In terms of the ADU and being subject to inspections, all of our ordinance related to building and construction as well as property maintenance still applies, so all inspections will apply to the accessory dwelling units.
Okay. All right, I think that about does it. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.